Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Erin Benham. I'm calling to order the Legislation Policy Development Committee Meeting. First order of business is our minutes, two over minutes from our last meeting of October 7.
This is Woody. I move for approve the minutes.
This is Malia.
This is Bonnie, I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Any change, I should say, any changes first, all in favor?
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Uh-oh. Well, like I said, didn't hear our minute. That's a one. Okay. Um, the first order of business, I know some of you received, or you should have all received by now, legislation proposals from Laura this morning. Laura and I spoke yesterday, and we thought the best thing was not to go and spend a whole, a lot of time today going into that. For those of you who have been on the board before, they do take some time, and we didn't really want to rush through them, and a lot of you don't, you know, understand, even know the process. So, we decided to have a special meeting, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna send it over to Laura so she can just explain a little bit about what we're gonna do. But I would ask that you let me know when you're available within the next week, they're saying next week, your availability to have a special meeting that we estimate to be an hour. And I will try to come up with some time that is mutual for all of us just to go over the legislation proposals. So, I'm gonna hand it over to Laura, and she's gonna just explain a little bit why we went into this.
Sure. So, just to introduce myself, I'm Laura Stefan, the Chief of Staff and Legislative Liaison for the Department of Education. And yesterday morning, you all should have received an email from me that had nine attachments. So, this year, we are going to be putting forward nine legislative proposals for your consideration. We have decided to do that during a special meeting, as Erin indicated. So, we're trying to get that done within the next week or so. And then, with your feedback, input, and approval, I will bring whichever proposals you want to put forward to the full board in December. For those of you who haven't been through the process before, we then schedule a meeting with the Chairs of the Education Committee. It's usually the Commissioner and I. Last year, I believe, we included a few board members in that. And we will go over the legislative proposals, and we ask the Education Committee to raise all of our proposals as a single bill, is what they usually do. If there's a specific proposal that we ask for, to be a standalone, they will do that also, but typically, it's like an act concerning the Department of Education. And then, it would be raised as a committee bill, and it would make its way through the legislative process, where it would be called for a public hearing, and the Commissioner will obviously go and testify. We welcome any support from board members if they like to submit testimony, and then it makes its way through the regular legislative process. And we have a long session this next year, so we're going in the first Wednesday after the first Tuesday in January this year, and then the session will go until, until June, the first week in June. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions, but I'm looking forward to presenting to you within the next couple of weeks.
All right. Thanks, Laura. And I would just really encourage the committee just to read over those proposals if you haven't already. I assure you, I mean, some of them sound like pure educational jargon, but I assure you, when Laura goes over, you'll have a better understanding of what they mean, especially the one on the certification, because I know that's, that was sort of a tricky one to read. But I would ask that you send her any questions before our special meeting, because that will help her be able to answer the questions that you have, and we should be able to get through those. And then also, just remember to send me the dates when you can. Okay? Our next item, we're gonna turn over our update on Goal Four, and turning it over to Desi and Lisa.
Hi, everybody. I'm Desi Nesmith, Deputy Commissioner, and I'm joined by Lisa Lemenzo. Can you introduce yourself?
Good morning, or good afternoon, everyone. I'm Lisa Lemenzo, Division Director of the Turnaround Office.
So, Matt, if you are still here, are you able to share the PowerPoint? Thank you. All right.
I am attempting to do it, and it's not working, so.
While we're getting this stuff, I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page, because I know I said it in an email, but we thought it made sense to kind of compartmentalize our review of the comprehensive plan goals. And so, that's why we're focusing on Goal Four today, to ensure that we have sufficient time for questions and discussion. And then, in the next meeting or meetings, you know, depending on the length of the agenda, you know, we're often tight on time, we will work through the remaining goals. We got it up there. That's good news.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jessa. Let me just up the volume here. So, Lisa and I are gonna just go through and just give you all an update on Goal Four. I know you all are familiar with the State Board Plan and the things that we said we were gonna do. So, it's good to be able to give you an update on some of the things that we've been able to accomplish and just where we are on this. So, next slide, please. One of the first things that we felt was really important for us to do around Goal Four, which is, you know, having great schools as outcomes, is we needed to attack this in two ways. We needed to build our internal capacity, and we needed to do some things differently externally. One of the things that we learned when we came onboard, I think it was like 2016-ish, somewhere in there, was that the approach of trying to help everybody and give everybody the same support with our capacity was not working. There was just no way, and frankly, it didn't really, that approach was a fine approach at the beginning, but we knew we needed to do some things differently. And one of the things that, when we developed the State Board Plan, it was at the same time that the ESSA Plan was developed. So, it was a great way to align both of the needs for what we were trying to do as a state. And so, we took the Great Schools goal and put it into two buckets. The first was internal capacity. One of the things we realized is that the people who worked here hadn't really gotten a lot of opportunities to be developed professionally and to receive professional development. And so, one of the things we knew we needed to do was to sort of train up our people. Before, we can provide really high-level and high-quality supports externally, we have to make sure the people that we have working on this have a really good skill set and an awareness of the most recent research and implementation and strategies and things like that. So, one of the first things that we developed was what we call cross-divisional teams. We knew when we were gonna support districts, we wanted to tier that support, just like we do with kids, right, in a classroom. Everybody gets that Tier One, the kids who need a little bit more support get Tier Two, and the neediest students get that most intensive support of Tier Three. So, we approached our districts the same way. And in order to do this, we created the cross-divisional teams. So, before, the way it worked before, you know, Special Ed, you know, Special Ed would deal with districts on Special Ed things, and Student Supports would deal with districts on Student Support things, and Academic Office would deal with districts on Academic Office things. And it was, it was a bit siloed. So, what we did is we started to break down those silos and build support teams around the most neediest districts, the opportunity districts. And those teams were designed based on the needs of the district. So, you have 10 opportunity districts that have 10 different teams based on the supports that they needed. And we reached that conclusion by talking with them, by looking at the data, by surveying them on what their needs were. So, the cross-divisional team piece is something that we've had up and running for a number of years. And frankly, every year, we're refining this. We're finding new ways to do it. We're listening to people on the team. Lisa and I met with every member of the cross-divisional team and said, straight up, like, tell us the real deal. What's working for you? What's not working for you? How can this process be better? So, we aren't, we didn't just create this and then just stop, or let it become something that was stagnant. We're constantly looking at how to improve that and working with the folks on the cross-divisional team. You all know about the Accountability System and the Next Generation Accountability Reports and all of that information. All of that gets looked at as we're working with the districts, along with this idea of evidence-based interventions. So, we wanted to sort of stop districts from just doing everything under the sun, right? The kitchen approaches, the kitchen sink approach. We're just gonna throw everything we have, and we'll see what sticks. And we've gone down this path of really looking at evidence-based interventions. And that led to us internally creating evidence-based guides. And those guides are useful for the cross-divisional teams and the districts to have something to know what the latest research is. So, all of those things are happening internally on the training side. The other thing that we noticed, and this might sound like a minor thing, but having gone from districts where Lisa and I work into the department, one of the things that we realized is that folks externally pick up the phone based on who they know. So, people would call their friend, or they would call someone who knew someone to call a state and ask a question. We didn't really have a good way of letting districts know who existed and what parts of the agency, and what those functions were. And so, again, it sounds like a small thing, but having an internal directory that districts now know who you need to call for what things. And if you are part of the opportunity districts, you have now an entire group of people on that cross-divisional team that support you. So, you've gone from, you know, picking up the phone, calling this person because you know them, or you've had a relationship with them in the past, to knowing who your support team is that you're surrounded by. So, those are just some of the things that we've done internally. And I'm gonna turn it over to Lisa to talk about some of the things that we've done externally.
Thank you, Desi. And before we begin, Matt, would you mind just clicking a few more times so the descriptions of each of those show up on the slide? So, while Matt is doing that, as Desi said, we knew we had to approach this in two ways, internally and externally. So, on the right side of this graphic, you're going to notice there are three components to how we approached Great Schools, one being evidence-based guides, the second being professional learning, and the third is the calendar. So, beginning with the evidence-based guides, Desi touched upon it, because our cross-divisional team are the authors of these guides. So, under ESSA, all federal funds must be tied to an evidence base. And our state plan included the development of these guides. The purpose of these evidence-based guys, guides, were to really equip our districts and schools with research-driven practices that inform school and district decision-making and also optimizing the use of funds. So, ultimately, this was about thinking more critically of what was being funded and tying it to the research. So, we currently have nine guides, which are reviewed and updated periodically. These guides are written, like Desi said, by various leads in the agency that have the given expertise. They include climate and culture, early learning, English language proficiency, mathematics, on-track graduation, reading, student-family-community engagement, science, and leadership. So, in addition to that, or those guides, our Performance Office also created and updates the Using Accountability Results Guide to School Improvement, which includes definitions for and a menu of state-approved evidence-based interventions and resources as they align to the Next Generation Accountability System. The next component of our external support is a big one. It's our professional learning strategy. And we know the importance of evolving professional learning opportunities based on what the data is telling us and what we hear and see from our districts and schools. You know that the Turnaround Office is very much forward-facing and in these districts and schools on a regular basis. So, that helps us to identify what the need is. So, even within this professional learning strategy, I like to break it up into three components. We have an agency-wide component, one specific to the Turnaround Office, and the last is our external partners. So, agency-wide, I could probably be here for many, many hours, just sharing with you all the different ways that the agency has supported and targeted improvement for all of our schools, but also, in particular, for our Alliance districts. To just name a few, so you get an idea of the scope, the Turnaround Office has partnered with the Performance Office in understanding the Next Generation Accountability System, understanding data analysis, and setting targets. With the Office of Student Supports, many opportunities have been facilitated to support PBIS, Family and Community Partnerships, Attendance Improvement Initiatives. And the Academic Office also provides targeted support through REEDCon and the Connecticut Literacy Model. I mean, when I say that I can literally be here for quite some time listing it, but the importance is that this is really a team effort, and that although we do oversee them, these districts and the Turnaround Office and our neediest schools, that we do rely on our agency-wide offices to support us. The second part of this is the Turnaround Office. And as a Turnaround Office, we have also developed our system of support to meet the evolving changes and needs of our districts and schools. So, we have broad systematic district PD through our Alliance District Symposiums. We have Netstat School Leadership Modules three times a year. And then, we've also adapted, and given the pandemic, this was an opportunity to do things differently and be responsive to the needs of our leaders in the field. So, we created pop-up PDs, which were created to really provide short, bite-sized PDs on targeted topics, because we know that being away from a district or a school for hours on end in one day is very difficult. So, these are like 20 to 30-minute bite-sized PDs that we are offering, and we're also extending agency-wide. And the last bucket of this support extends to our many external partnerships. I can give you a few examples. The Bureau of Special Education, we partnered with CIRC and them to support our Alliance districts, and specifically charters. You are all familiar with our charters. And in supporting them, we've provided CIRC support at the Tier One level, so broad scope on special education. But then, we also personalize the approach. And so, there are coaches that are pushing into our charters with the heaviest need. We're also working with the Talent Office around targeted leadership development with New York City Leadership Academy, and also, the Connecticut Association of CAS with Supporting Principal Leadership. So, I know it's a lot. It was just really important to give you the scope of the professional learning. I wanna wrap up this part of it by saying that a common thread throughout each of these is leveraging promising practices statewide and highlighting them as we work towards continuous improvement. This is a conversation that we have often with our Accountability and Support Committee, who really encourage us and support us in developing opportunities to spotlight and connect districts and schools across the state and have it be an ongoing effort. So, know that, you know, we thank the Accountability and Support. We work closely with them, with that committee, and making sure that that is a through line among all of this. And lastly, and quickly, is our calendar. And we're actually really proud of this. And like the directory, it is a small, what seems like a small thing, but it's really important when you have so many different opportunities that are coming at you as a superintendent, or a principal, or assistant superintendent. It's hard. It's hard to manage it all. So, we wanted to create a one-stop shop on our online website, which houses all the different opportunities across all of the offices. We created it to try to eliminate some of those barriers that we have, like the emails. We created it so that you can filter, you can search, and you can also sign up for notification on certain topics. So, Desi, I think at this point, we can move on to the metrics side.
Yeah. The one last thing I would just wanna add here, you know, so, the five things that you see here, Lisa and I have been asked by CCSSO, we've been asked by the Federal Education Group, we've presented to Results for America, we've presented to other states on Connecticut's approach. People have really shown a lot of interest in how we've approached and tiered our level of support. And we presented, like I said, at different places over the past couple of years. And even yesterday, Lisa and I had a call with the Federal Education Group about Connecticut's approach. And so, this is something that has gotten attention, and a lot of other states have reached out to find out how we sort of built what you're seeing here on this slide. So, we're proud of this work. And this is not something that is stagnant. You know, this is something that we are constantly saying, okay, what worked this year? What do we need to change? What do we need to do differently? And to Lisa's point, you know, I'm just looking at my screen, Mr. Harris, Erin Benham, folks and accountability, and so Bonnie, Woody, you know, Accountability and Support basically gave us the marching order and said, we want you to hold folks accountable, and we want you to develop systems to share the good things that are happening in Connecticut. Because when you have 200 districts, you don't always have to go external to the state to find out what are some of those best practices. So, I just wanted to end with that piece here on this slide, and we can transition to the next slide. So, in addition to the Great Schools piece, we have metrics here. The 2021 Goal Metrics, we've had to change these, or I should say, shift these, not change these, because of the pandemic. So, the next time that we're actually gonna run the school-level release will be 2022. So, we'll be able to look back and see where we went from 2015, 2016, to 2021, 2022. It's hard to keep it all straight in my head sometimes. But we also have sub-targets that we can share with you now and update on some of the sub-targets, because we've been mentioning the tiered level of support, particularly around the 10 opportunity districts. Those are our 10 neediest districts. And what we are able to see from looking at our baseline year to last year, when we test, or year before last, I should say, when we tested, is that nine out of 10 of those districts showed an increase on their accountability indices, which is sort of, that's the measure that we're looking at for districts, both short-term and long-term. We wanna see those districts make progress on their accountability measures. And yeah, we're happy to tell you that nine out of 10 of them have shown that progress. That tells us that we're moving things in the right direction, but it's also important for us to continue to refine and refresh this year over year so that that progress does not stop. Because there's a lot, we have a lot of, we've got a long way to go on that. As far as the schools, the other piece I can give you in terms of an update is that when you look at the schools that are in the opportunity districts that we touch, that receive either state or federal funding, so those are our Commissioners Network schools, those are SIG, the School Improvement Grant Schools. So, two-thirds of those schools also showed progress between our baseline year and the last year that we took this measure pre-pandemic. So, one of the things that we take away from that is that it's crucial for us, and I have to, the credit goes to Lisa for this, to build the system for those schools to share what they're doing with other schools. Because there's a, one piece of this is the district level, but frankly, having worked in the district, where the rubber meets the road is at the school level. And so, when we have principals who are able to show progress and teachers, we have to be able to give them the opportunity to share what it is that they're doing. And just to be completely transparent with you all, this isn't just about these schools. This is about charter schools. This is about Commissioners Network schools. This is about SIG schools. I think there was a time years ago where we were a little bit nervous, you know, and we didn't know if the non-charters were gonna be judgmental of the charters, and frankly, vice versa. And we, when we put these leaders in the room together, it just, it took off. And sharing best practices, you know, it really is something that has just grown year over year. And so, we're proud of the work that we're doing. We have a long way to go, but we are seeing our, some of our efforts are paying off, and we're getting some traction here, which is what the charge was from Accountability and Support in those early days. And the last thing I'll say here is that Lisa and I regularly are bringing both schools and districts to Accountability and Support. Malia, you were on Accountability and Support for years with us, so you know as well, we're constantly bringing, almost on a monthly basis, different districts and different schools to Accountability and Support so that our board knows what's happening at the school level. Because that, again, is where we're gonna see progress. And not to take anything away from all the work that's happening at the district level, but for this, this specific work, where the rubber meets the road is at the school level for us. Next slide, please.
So, this slide really just exhibits, in a graphic form, just all the different supports that the Turnaround Office provides, across the Alliance districts, at the school level, at the district level. And what we're most proud of is just being responsive to what we're seeing and hearing in the field, and then also being innovative, and trying to foresee what the need is and where we need to go. So, it's a balance. Those of you who are in schools and districts or have experience and know that you're working on multiple tracks at all times. And so, just to highlight a couple of them, the Commissioners Network Leadership Institute, that actually started this summer. And it was as a result of onboarding a eight, I'm sorry, nine new Commissioners Network principals. This was brought to you all in the spring, so you're aware of those schools from Waterbury, Hartford, and New Britton. And being that it was just such a large group, and some brand-new principals, others have a bit more experience, but we wanted an opportunity to bring them all together, level-set on the expectations of Commissioners Network, provide them with some school improvement, professional learning, and then also hear from either former Commissioners Network schools, principals, or current Commissioners Network principals. Because there's power. There is a lot of power from hearing from your peers. We also set up site visits so that these new schools could attend the current schools or former schools to see in practice. So, there's one thing about having resources on a page, and I think there's a time and place for that, but there's also something very powerful about being in a room, being in a school with principals and leaders in the same shoes as you. So, you know, another thing that we have started, and I would like to to bring up, are the pop-up PD sessions that I mentioned. These are really very, very attractive to principals and district leadership, because the topics, they send them into us, they'll be like, you know what, I'm really struggling with X. And we put together a quick PD on best practices and/or bring in other folks from the field who we know are doing a great job about it. And then, for 20 to 30 minutes, they pop in, get really tangible and actionable strategies, and then pop back out. And so, that was something, again, it was in response to what they said. There are, there is such a thing as Zoom fatigue, as we all know. So, having that has been very successful. And again, this slide, come next year, will look very different. Come six months from now, it can look very different. In the Turnaround Office, we work really hard to just continue to evolve and be responsive to the needs of our schools and districts.
So, you know, in closing, I just, I wanna just share this, and I promised Mr. Harris I'm not gonna go off onto a tangent, but Lisa and I approached this work from experience. We've done this at Metacom. So, we know how to move things forward. The key here at this level is knowing how to work with other people to get them to move in that direction. And that is, that is something that I just, we're very passionate about. This is our wheelhouse, and it's just very exciting. I love this, and we work really well together doing this work. And it has been a pleasure to do this for the last couple of years at the department. And, you know, again, I'll stop now, but Accountability and Support really gave Lisa and I the wind at our back to do everything that you just talked. So, I'll stop there, and thank you all.
Well, thank you, Lisa and Desi. That was a great update.
Well, thank you, Lisa. And Desi, that was a great update. It was nice to hear, you know, looking back at 2016 where that started and where it is now is just amazing. I'm gonna open it up to board members if they have any questions for Lisa or Desi. Malia?
I don't have any questions. I actually just wanted to comment, just sort of weighing in, knowing where it came from as well. You've clearly given this life that you need to say that you were passionate about it because it clearly comes from the presentation and how much you all own it and are clearly very proud of and engaged in this work. And so I just wanna, just wanna say that that comes through loud and clear. And indeed, just knowing where it came from, right? Where it was just sort of lots of words on a page. And, but it wasn't anything that you could, as an external person, really see and feel how that came together? The way you have organized that and brought life to it. Many kudos. Great job.
Bob?
Yeah, same thing. It's really well done. I mean, that's a terrific support system for the schools and districts. So I think you've done a great job. And I can see how it can be so helpful to them. Because I know that a lot of people feel lost at some time. And being able to go to resources like this is gonna be really, really helpful. I guess one question, are they, you know, like your pop-ups and other things, are they recorded so that somebody could look at them later? If they weren't able to, you know, go into some chat, they would check and watch this thing?
That's a great question. And I'm going to say it depends on the topic. So I'll be honest with you, when you record things, it brings forward some hesitancy to being honest sometimes, knowing that it's going to be uploaded to the website. But depending on the topic, we either record if it's something that we feel comfortable with sharing. And then other times, we just post the presentation and the associated links. So for example, the latest one that we did, we knew we need to reinvigorate and innovate from our virtual model with classrooms and so forth. So we created a virtual look-for tool. And we got feedback. We continued to evolve it over time. We did a pop-up PD. We uploaded also the tool. And we created some coaching tools as well for districts and school leaders. And they're all on our website. So that's a long-winded way of saying it depends on the topic.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. There are some things you just don't want to have there.
Yeah.
And they would be, you know, hesitant to do that. That's great.
We worked really hard in developing really candid and honest conversations with our schools. Because that's where really the change and improvement happens, is when you can be candid with one another. So we keep that in mind and make a decision based on that.
You guys are good coaches.
Thank you.
Yeah, Lisa, I think, like when you say candid conversations, I think that's what I've noticed the biggest change in accountability. You know, I look back at 2016, it was just this, you know, we've talked about it a lot. I say to Stella, we're just checking this off and that's all we're gonna do. And what a change it's become. And it, they really are candid conversations and they do come in very prepared. And they know that, you know, we're gonna be making them accountable. And I'd love, I know the last time, and I forgot what the schools were, but some of them actually came in and used that peer sharing, which we thought, you know, we were trying to get districts to do this. Go ahead and go to Clinton School and see how they did this. And that to me is just fantastic. I mean, there's no reason to start this all over again if one school is struggling with the exact same thing someone has become successful with. You know, and really worked, becomes successful. It wasn't easy. It's really great to see this work so far. And for, you know, Woody, Karen and Bonnie, who are newer to the board, when we're back to normal phase and after accountability, often we go on some school visits. So I would, you know, I would welcome you to come on these. Because that's when you really do see what's going on. It's one thing for them to, you know, like Malia said, on paper and what it looks like on paper. But to actually go in there and actually see it in action is something else. That's when you know the work is really, is really working. So thank you all. Anything else before we move off this topic? I didn't wanna, I wanna make sure anybody, other board member, Donna, are you raising your hand or no?
I wasn't, but I will, I will take the opportunity just to say, well done, Desi and Lisa. And I promise, Desi, I won't go off. But I obviously work with them, but I know of their work. As they put it together at MetaComit School years before they got to the state board. So they clearly demonstrated the passion for this, for this work that they're doing. Just job well done. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our next item, which many of, many, I'm sure you'll recall that this item came up at our last board meeting. It was the budget request that were, that came from OPM. And we got into quite a discussion and then we realized we really needed to table. So Kathy is on the call to help us with some questions that I'm sure some of you have. And at the same time to talk about what we originally, and I think Woody and Karen, you were on the board on this committee when we did talk about this, the school choice statement. If you recall, we had the statement Justin had sent to you. This goes back a couple of months. But it was a statement that this committee worked on for, I don't know, Donna and Malia, over a year. And it finally, we finally got it complete. However, by the time it would go to the full board, we didn't have a forum. So it never came to the board. I think the date on it was January of 2019. That's when we finished it. And maybe now is the time, after, you know, Kathy talks about it, that that is a statement with the legislation opening that we just revised as far as dates go in there. I think it's pretty solid the way it's written. But we can talk about that after Kathy goes through the proposal that we will be seeing at our board meeting tomorrow. Well, not tomorrow, in a couple hours, that we will be seeing again at the board meeting, because that's coming up again. So Kathy, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Erin. And it's Kathy Dempsey. I'm the Chief Financial Officer with the department. It's nice to see everyone this afternoon. Talk a little Budget 101 and then a little choice programming, which I think will be a longer conversation. It's probably helpful to, the state budget process actually starts in September. And we have a biennial budget, which is what we are preparing now. And then in the midterm year, we do an update. And that will be next fall, that I'll be having those conversations with you. In September, all of you approved the department's current services budget. And current services is literally what is the cost of doing what we're currently doing moving forward. It actually doesn't allow for inflation. I don't think I've seen an inflation factor in the budget in maybe 15 years. But, you know, it supports the staffing of the department and the programs that we operate. The second part of the budget, which was brought to you at the October meeting, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the meeting. But that is called the options process. And the options process consists of three potential items. Reduction options, reallocation options, and expansion options. Given the current, and we do this every year. Given the current concern over the state's fiscal health in light of the pandemic, each agency was required to submit reduction options totaling upwards of 10%. The only flexibility that they had was to the extent that you operate an entitlement program that provides municipal aid. The OPM and the Governor's Office are going to look at those separately. And so for us, an example of that would be the Education Cost Sharing Grant, which is the state's largest commitment of funds to local school districts and is a little over $2 billion. Frankly, it's, it's the bulk of our budget. But in the remainder of the accounts, the expectation is, is that agencies will suggest adjustments. And our adjustments in total for the agency do not actually meet the 10%. They're more like around 7%. But as we approach, like, you know, I guess, how do you decide what you're going to do? We kind of keep in mind several things. First and foremost, you know, how do we maintain the staffing in the agency? Because for those of you who are new members, we are almost 35% smaller than we were when I started this role in 2013. And when I say that, it always gives me anxiety as I think about the silver tsunami ahead of us. But that is, so staffing at the technical high school system, staffing for the department central office, that is always a priority for us. The second area of priority is ensuring that resources that go on an annual basis to our districts, either if they cannot increase because of the fiscal condition, that they at least remain level funding. So on the spreadsheet that was attached to the board report, you saw a lot of red. And some of that red actually is not a reduction from the current funding for that account. And when I say that, let me use, for example, the excess cost student-based account, which is designed to fund the high cost of, I'm sorry, high-cost special education students. So students whose costs exceed four and a half times of the local per pupil cost are, the districts is eligible for reimbursement under that account on a current year basis. So in our current services budget, you would have seen a $60 million increase in that line item. Because according to statute, if we do an estimate and we fully pay the four and a half, all the costs above the four and a half times, then we would actually need $60 million more than what we currently have in that line item. So as part of our reduction option, what we suggest is, is that the state continue to fund the account at least at the current level. So it shows as a reduction on what you are looking at. Because it takes that $60 million that the state would need to add, but frankly, it doesn't have the funding available to add right now. And it just backs it out, which allows us to, again, maintain critical funding to our local school districts, particularly given what's going on right now. You will see adjustments in a variety of our programs. And before we make those, we actually take a look particularly, I know questions came up about the choice programs and I had some conversations with some of you. We take a look at enrollment statistics going back several years. We take a quick look at what enrollment looks like and what we're hearing on the ground for the current year. And then based upon what those accounts have experienced over the last several years and what we anticipate, we will recommend an adjustment for those accounts that we believe will not impact the number of students enrolled in those accounts. It could potentially impact the amount per pupil that a district receives. But it will allow the baseline grant for the actual student enrollment will be maintained. The other type of options that, so in our board report, you see two reallocation requests. One of which is for, it's purely a technical thing, which is there's some money in the magnet school account that should have been moved at the time that they created the chef transportation account, and it wasn't. And so we're asking that those funds be, which are dedicated to transportation costs for programs in the choice region, be moved over. The other item that we were seeking reallocation for was, actually, I should say there was three, was under our bilingual education program. Bilingual education grant is an entitlement grant. It's funded at a little over $3 million. However, about 1.2 million of it is by statute reserved for pilot programs that have not been in operation since 2015. So unfortunately, what that has meant is that we have, we turned that money back at the end of the year as elapsed. And so being that it's one of the commissioner's priorities and knowing, again, that we are constrained by the state's fiscal resources, we are seeking permission to reuse that funding and essentially create an account that would allow the commissioner to provide targeted support to districts that are seeing large increases in their L populations. The final one that came up, which pertains to a choice program, is the reallocation of funding in the charter school line item. As you know, in the past year, two charter schools have closed in Stanford. The one remaining charter school, Stanford Charter School for Excellence, actually came before the board. I wanna say it was in the summer. I'm losing track. This pandemic time is like, I'm not sure which day it is. But they came before the board.
I think it was, Kathy. I think it came in front of us in July.
Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna say, I have, I have a memory of night weather. But they were seeking, they are a school that, performance-wise, has done very well by the students they serve in Stanford. And they were seeking to expand their program to include middle school grades. And, you know, one of the conundrums of the charter school account is it's sort of a chicken or egg thing. Which comes first? Does the state board approve the program? Or do we get approval for funding first? The legislature and OPM would much prefer that we ask for the funding before the state board actually then approves the expansion of the program itself. And so the board directed the charter, Stanford Charter School for Excellence, to essentially follow our process. Well, the only way they can follow the process is for us to actually put in a request for that expansion. And this is just the very first step in the process. I mean, it will have to make it through the Office of Policy and Management. It would have, you know, the governor, the legislature. And if it does, then the board would have the opportunity, the funds would then be available and the board would have the opportunity to, at that time, vote and decide whether you wanted to allow that expansion of the grades for that program. And so with the closing of the two programs in Stanford and this being the remaining program and then the directing the school to actually follow the process, that is the reason that it was included as part of our budget package. I can, I'm happy, Erin, if you want me to stop and answer some budgetary questions or go straight to choice, your, your call.
Maybe just stop here because this, that was basically our discussion at the board. I know after speaking to Kathy myself, it cleared up matters. I think this was so odd for us because, you know, it was a pretty contentious meeting in July when they came in front of us. And it was tough telling a school that does very well, and we want them to be well, we want them to expand. But the bottom line is that we couldn't, we couldn't approve that expansion because there was no money for it. Then it was explained to me that this piece that is in the board proposal for later is the only way that they really could request ever for that expansion. And so we would be preventing them, but it's not approving expansion. Because I did have a hard time knowing that we have many schools out there that need assistance and singling out that one sort of just raised a red flag for a lot of us, I think. And I'm sure a lot of it was, it came so close to just seeing them in July. It was really just two board meetings away, that we had seen the school. And then it felt like this was just another way for them to get their funding. So I know that has been cleared up for me and I understand it a little bit better. But I wanna, you know, open it up to the rest of the board also to address this particular proposal before we move into the school choice statement. So is there any other, Bonnie?
Yeah, Kathy, I want to take this time to thank you for spending time with me discussing the issue as well. I think I would. I think I, I would echo what Erin said. And for me, anytime I see a million dollars being taken away from agri-science and from our, from our tech schools, that's very, very alarming. I appreciated your, your explanation as to why. I don't like it. I understand why you're choosing to do it. But, but I think anytime that we start, you know, shifting funding like that, it, it raises, raises, you know, some serious questions. I do look forward, Madam Chair, to having a robust discussion on how we take equity forward with regards to school choice in terms of what we are getting. You know, on a per pupil basis, I think that is the crux of this whole matter, is, is how we decide who gets to have how much. And I, and I would look forward, Erin, to, to a lot more discussion on that and seeing what you all had developed previous to my arrival on the board.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Bonnie. I do think, you know, it was, it was on our, I think Joseph was on our original committee meeting when we, we started up again after, in the summer. And then we were asked to shift it off because of the settlement, the agreement that was from the litigation that was presently in place. And so we asked to, to come off of it a little bit. But I think with this, you know, this was a strong piece for this committee to look at, you know, the equity of funding and even accessibility to the choice programs. And that if we're truly calling them choice programs, then that has to be addressed. And, and we wanted to make sure that we had some statement that we could forward to the legislation. And now is the perfect time to do it since we'd have to have that approved by the full board in order to do that in January. So before we get into that, though, Bob, do you have a question, you want a question? Bob, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I guess the thing that struck me about that, too, is just, you know, there's a couple, two and a half million coming out of the tech schools. And we were shifting money somewhere else, which is, you know, that's always problematic. I mean, it's that we won't be able to maintain flat funding or staff, staffing that we have with, by doing something like that. Someone's going to have to give because most of it is people.
Right. And so Bob, I think the good thing about, and this is actually Bonnie and I had this conversation exactly. The reduction that you see in the technical high school line item is literally contingent upon the legislative proposal that would eliminate the requirement for the world languages. So in the current services budget you all voted on, there was an increase of two and a half million. And that would have funded the cost of the teachers in order to meet that. So the reduction envisions that if the legislation is successful, that you wouldn't need that two and a half million for that purpose. And not that you wouldn't need it for potentially another purpose, but that was, and I had worked with Superintendent Webby and Mora, and they actually submitted that to us as a proposed reduction.
Okay, but it's contingent on that. If they don't, we don't lose the money, if they don't do away with the, the language program. That's good. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that.
Sorry about the cat.
Other questions from committee members? Okay. Oh, Karen?
Yeah, so on the process for charter schools to get, to get expansion, I think what I'm hearing is that we would, we would approve an increase in funding. That then triggers that action of the state legislature. And then I think you said it would come back to the board. And so I guess, it seems like at this first step, we would, what, what, what would, what would be a reason to get to the next, to bring it back to the board and not prove it if we're, if we're putting it in at this point? I mean, this seems like this is our action here. And that our action would be so long as the legislator concurred that that would be, I guess I'm not sure why it would come back to the state board a second time.
So.
Our authorizing action here.
Well, this actually isn't an authorizing action for, to change their charter. This is strictly an action that allows us to make a request of funding from the governor and potentially the legislature. And so if it were approved, and at that time, so let's say we're in next spring, and, you know, it's been funded. The board would still have to make the decision based upon the factors that Desi and Lisa Lemenzo brought to you on whether or not the school was, the program was still successful. So you will still have, the board will still have the opportunity to weigh in and actually approve that expansion based on the educational needs that are being, of the kids who are being served versus the money.
Okay. Kathy, on that, Kathy, because I, I know a lot of this has to do with seats. And I know in our July meeting, we, we had a lot of back and forth about seats. And that we can't, we can't change that. Legislation has to change the seats. If this goes, like we asked for this increased funding, is it a possibility that if they approve it, it comes back to the board? But we have other charter schools that also are asking for seats? Would this not? Like, I'm trying to look at it in a way that we're not just setting up something that goes to this, that the legislation approves, and it just goes to this school. Is there a way that they expand seats? And, you know, as Desi kept reminding us in the meeting, that we have other charter schools that also, you know, are entitled to funding and expansion if they chose to do that? Or would this really tie us into Stanford Excellence, and we, it would have to go there?
So that's a good question. And that actually, it, it, it's, I hate to say, it's not a completely straightforward answer. So part of that, what would determine that would be the work that the department, through Laura, would do with the legislature and with OPM in terms of whether or not the legislature designates that these seats are specifically for this expansion? Or if they provide more flexibility, which would allow us then to potentially consider other schools? But so it, it would depend. It would, and if that's something the board wanted us to work on with the legislature and OPM, then, you know, that's something that Laura most certainly could do. I would say that without, absent us doing that or making that suggestion, it would be specifically for the Stanford Charter School for Excellence.
I sort of brought that up because I think that's sort of where Karen, I don't know if I'm, I was sort of reading you that maybe that's where you were thinking, too, that why just this school? And if we're doing this action, aren't we sort of just telling that legislation approves it, it's a go? And I'd love to see it go. I'd love to see them expand. I'd love to see the tech schools get more money to act. I'd like to see them all funded equitably. I guess they have, still have difficulty that it singles out just this school. And I don't know if there's a way around that. Like, this is, if we're, if we're the roadblock that they can't even ask for the expansion, I understand that. But is there a way of opening up that roadblock and not designating one, only one school? Like, can we say choice programs? I don't know.
Yeah, I wasn't having a firm with it going to Stanford. I guess my assumption was that the, the staff is making that recommendation, that they had analyzed that and is recommending it for Stanford. So I wasn't questioning whether it would be for Stanford or somewhere else. I'm fine with it being expansion there.
And I think, you know, the letter we got received today, if you read the letter in our participation, and we get that all the time, that, you know, they're asking us to do something that we really aren't really voting on to do. But their understanding is that we are now giving this approval to expand. And that's really not what we're doing at all. And I can understand why they think that. Malia, I know you had your hand raised.
I was just gonna comment about, I think, Erin, the piece that you were talking about in terms of, you know, a path toward more equitable funding across choice programs. And I, and I'm just wondering, you know, is, is it a, is that hope and dream a bridge too far for the purpose that we're talking about at the moment, right? In terms, because I think in all of our conversations last, what, two years ago, it almost feels like now, a year and a half ago, around the statement is that there is, it's not, it's not just, you know, one sort of way that those, those choice programs are funded. There's myriad inequitable ways in which those programs are funded. So making, sort of making a play or a statement through this budgetary process that, that Kathy's described to us right now, doesn't sound like it's the appropriate place. So I'm wondering if we, if we need to sort of separate the two, but recognize that this is an illustration of the fact that they, that it is not just this one way, this one vehicle by which choice is, choice is actually funded. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I can understand it. I mean, I think, I think we would muddy the, the waters that we're, we're throwing this all in and trying to, and, and it makes it look like we're against Stanford, and that's not the way we want to come, you know, across it by any means for a school that's doing so well. And it makes sense with the two stamp, you know, the other, the charter schools in Stanford closing and so forth. I mean, we'd be taking away choice, and here we are saying we want to promote choice. And, and we're on, you know, we're, we're not allowing that to happen. I just think it was, you know, like, as Bob said, you know, you, you saw the, the red come up and the takeaway from one choice program, and then another one has it. It just sort of was a little, a little bit take, take back. But I, I do understand the process. It just.
Well, and, but to your point, Erin, if I could just jump in for a second to illustrate that, that again, I think this process, that sort of seeing from one, you know, being taken from one and then similarly then put into another, just helps to illustrate the point and the need of the statement and for, for exactly the, the purpose that we were seeking the last time around, right?
Yeah, I think it's almost like perfect timing. You know, and I, you know, and this is for, and I know, you know, Bonnie and Woody and Karen, you weren't on the board when we went through this. But you have a statement that we came up with. I'll make sure, you know, Jessica can send it out again because it was quite some time ago. But I do think, Malia, it is probably perfect timing. Like, this is a perfect example of, of a choice school that we want to try to, you know, block, take those roadblocks away so that they can go ahead with their progress of asking for their expansion. But at the same time, have a statement go the legislation that we strongly believe that, you know, school choice inequitable has to be looked at for all our school choice programs.
Yeah, and I think it, it is that much larger conversation. Because I think frankly, before we expand choice in general, I think that if we don't address the underlying funding mechanisms, then we continue to create, expand on systems that, you know, are disparate and make it harder moving forward, frankly, to change the things that you, you might think would make it more equitable from a funding perspective. You know, it's much harder to add funds for 80,000 kids than it is for 5,000. You know, when you're looking, looking at trying to make parity, you know, between the programming. You know.
Just I'll unmute myself. The, the thing that, my understanding is, and I'm behind on understanding a lot of things, but the, it used to be that the, you know, the, the funding from the state that went to the districts was basically kind of set, right? And it didn't really go up and down with enrollment, even though it was theoretically did. But now it does go up and down with enrollment.
Yes.
And so part of what's going to happen with this is if you open up, if you do the Stanford stuff, then it's going to take kids out of the Stanford School District. They're going to get less money as a result of that. So it's a, there are winners and losers in this. Or there are people who get additional funding, and there's going to be places that don't. Now, these, this particular case, they were going to charters, they were probably in charter, other charter schools, which were being separately funded. So, you know, the, like you said, there's just a myriad of ways in which, as Malia said, every, everything gets funded in a different way. And it's, how do you put all that together and make it have, make it set, have sense? Even though you want to do something, it has, there's a cause and effect you may not be very apparent.
Yeah. I think that that's absolutely true. And, you know, the programs and their funding grew out of years of doing individual programs at a time. So choice was never considered in, you know, a broader, more holistic viewpoint. So, you know, the VOAGs and the technical high schools are the first magnet schools, essentially. Now, the technical high schools are a state entity and are, you know, are funded as a state agency. Whereas the VOAG programs are funded through a combination of state funding and tuition from the home district. And, you know, and then you layer in Open Choice, which was Project Concern in the late 1960s, which subsidizes students who attend suburban districts from either Hartford, Bridgeport, or New Haven, or the reverse, a suburban student who comes into one of those communities. And that's based upon participation in the program. So you can get, you know, anywhere from $3,000 for a child to, if it's a kindergartner that's full day in the chef region, $12,000 for that child. You know, it's not reflective necessarily of the expenditure of the school district. You know, and then within the magnet school account itself, which frankly, I think would be a huge feat just for us to have parity between the types of magnet schools, you know. I mean, right now, you have a funding mechanism for RSC-operated, host district, which would be like a Hartford or a New Haven operating. And then whether they're in the chef region or they're outside of the chef region. And then there's a couple other little, we literally calculate 90 schools grants individually, which is kind of insane. And, you know, then there's the charter schools. And, you know, arguably before, I would think one of the things that, you know, this board would want to think about before we even think, talk about a true expansion or a new charter school coming up, is, is the per pupil amount sufficient? I mean, we just had two schools close in the last two years. You know, a, again, before we think about enhancing the choice programs or expanding them, the underlying funding mechanisms really do need to be taken a look at. Because if they're not sustainable, then we have children enrolling in schools that are not going to be there at some point. Or are not going to be there in the, you know, in the way that they anticipated when their parents applied for them in the lottery to go to the choice programs.
And Kathy, when we get to that piece, that's where Desi and Lisa will guide us is their thoughts of this school, and they recommend what we do for this school.
Absolutely.
I, I think it does speak to that whole system before you, you try to, you know, do some, because they're all unrelated. You know, in the past, the charter schools would say to the districts, "Well, gee, you're still getting the same amount of money you got before. We're just taking some of the kids out. It should be, it should make it easier for you." Well, then that shifted. And so, and not right now, the, I'm surprised we haven't had a, a big revolt around the whole thing. But right now, the, the, like, the charter schools, the special ed cost goes back to the local district, even though they don't get any money for that kid. You know, so it's all kinds of interesting. I'm surprised your hair isn't very gray.
Oh, it is. I just. Would you recommend, like, what would your recommendation would be for our statement? Is just to bring it to the full board, like, change the dates and so forth would have to be changed. But is that our only avenue really to bring something forward to the legislation? I mean, I, I know you, did you draft it? I believe you drafted most of the statement or helped us with all the charts
Yeah.
for numerous months.
I still have the charts.
We all have the charts. And I think that's, you know, we came up with, you know, again, you know, a year and a half ago, that this is the only avenue this committee thought we had in order to make our concern known to the legislation. So I would ask that just that, maybe that statement, and I don't know if it's you or Justin, that that statement just be updated with the correct date. updated with the correct dates, you know, and correct commissioner would be good, too. And because the dates are off, you know, as far as that, when we'd like to go. And maybe we can just take a look at that. We can certainly take a look at it at our next meeting and then bring it right to the board on the same day. So, I mean, I don't think it's, you know, unless the new board members, in fairness to the three of you, have, you know, some issues with it. I know when you first saw it back in September, it wasn't, but we sort of, we also tabled it. You know.
The only other thing I would, I'm sorry, Chair Benham, the only other thing I would, I would ask that people either consider or maybe if they want to comment on now is, other than just the dates, I just wonder if there's some desire to also update it in the context. I mean, we know, we're considering a lot about the impact of the pandemic and, and parents' choices and parents' choices about sending kids into choice programs when it potentially means, you know, longer transportation rides or just, you know, exposure to different communities. So it just, it might, I know that it just might be something that you would want to consider is adding at least an acknowledgement that in the context of the pandemic, that, you know, choice programs may in fact need more support, you know, because of the decisions that families are making.
Yeah, that's a good thought. And of course, any edits that any committee member, as you're looking at it again, you know, we went through many edits of that and changes. You know, we welcome any of that. And we're not like held to any certain time, like we don't have to have the state, it's a statement. So like, we could send it to the legislation in February if we needed to, or January or February. Is that true?
Yes. Yes, that's absolutely.
I didn't think we were held to any certain date. I know when we first did it, we drafted it in a way that it was going to the opening session at that time.
Yeah.
So those are the, that need to be changed because it's now an opening session almost two years later. So. But can't we amend?
Anything else?
I was just gonna say, can't we amend the committee bill if we can do that as, you know, after it's raised and has had its public hearing? You know, the, the process just to, just to, you know, get into that big bill that we put forward, is that a possibility?
The statement itself?
Well, in terms of how we're going to go forward with, with what you guys had brought up and we're ready to go with, if that's something that, that we had the capacity and we all agree with what's previously been done with, with that work in terms of the equity, is that something that could move forward as well this session? If we have to.
I think that's, as I recall, and Donna and Malia could help maybe a little bit here, I think we sort of reverted to a statement versus trying to, as we looked at all those charts, we realized as a board, the only way to get any kind of equity was if we added to something, we were taking away from something. And that's not what we wanted to do. We want the legislation to be aware of it, that that is what they need to look at this again. They need to look at the funding differently. And if, you know, when, when this came up, Laura sent to me the last, there was a task force looking at funding. However, that task force completed their work in 2013. So quite some time ago now, that, so it is a time for, that this legislation needs to, to look at it. And, and Bonnie, probably it's very good timing. One would hope that legislation is a little bit more open to the fact that they need to look at funding at this point, at what we've seen going through as far as with the pandemic. It certainly has brought that out very clearly of the inequities in our districts. Malia?
Yeah, so the statement itself, right, is just asking for the legislature to take this into consideration, right? And as they're thinking, it doesn't actually make a suggestion to them about developing a particular committee or reconstructing a committee that existed before and bringing them back together. That's their prerogative to do and not really the place of the State Department of Education to tell them. But the statement itself suggests that they look at this. I guess my question is, what is the power of the statement?
I would agree.
We, yeah. It's there, then what, right? So we, we adopt it, then where does it go from there, right? Is there, is there any, do we have any sense? This is going to sound like I'm arguing against doing this at all, and that's not what I'm saying. I'm just an information builder sort of person. So, but, so my question is, the statement, yeah, we, we adopt the statement, then what? Is there anybody out there that is champion, championing such a thing? I can see that there are many that would champion against, as well as some that would champion for. And my sense is that there's probably a stronger contingency that may go against than the for. So I'm trying to figure out what could be the life of this? What's really the, the power and impact of the, of the statement?
Well, Malia, I think that's some of the questions we had when we first drafted it. And our hope back then is, if I recall, was trying to get into the hands of the education committee to start meeting with them. As you remember, you know, Joe Raibly was a big on, like, why aren't we meeting with these people? Like, why are they making decisions without meeting with the very people that they need to be talking to? We had one meeting, Alan, you know, we did have a meeting with the co-chairs. Again, we're now, like, that's a year old. And it was their idea. When we left that meeting, there were four of us, there were chairs there. It was their suggestion that we meet again and then during session and after session. And we never, they never came forward with it, with any meeting. And of course, then, you know, the session closed. But we never got the opportunity to meet with them before the session opened, like they had asked. And gave us the impression they were very much willing to do that. And they even said it was the very first time that the state board has ever asked to work collaboratively with them over funding and educational issues. Merely what, that's what it was. And this statement was going to be our number one thing. But the meeting never took place. It's very interesting that they had never, education chairs had never met with the state board.
So is that something that commissioners have a a personal preference for with regards to how they bring the state board forward to the legislature? Because I know some commissioners would not want to see the state board speak to something that may ultimately go in a direction that would not be a positive impact on the department. I think I'm wording that very carefully. But Kathy, work with me here. Jessa, work with me. And, and my question is, is, I guess, what is the, I agree with you, Malia, what is the commitment to that statement? Is there full commitment to the statement or is it just words that we're bringing forward to the legislature?
Good question. We had the same one when we, when we did it.
You know, and I think it might be helpful, too, when you're doing the conversation with Laura around legislation. She is hands down one of the most knowledgeable people working from the inside and, you know, how to make what the department has meaningful in a public perspective. Because we are absolutely walking a fine line. I mean, to the extent that the board's statement is that you're supportive of choice and finding equitable ways to fund choice, you know, across the programs. I think that that's something that, you know, people certainly understand from a policy perspective, to the extent that it looks at all like they're, you're suggesting, or I shouldn't say that, but a financial commitment that maybe the governor is unable to, you know, I'm, because I mean, I don't, we haven't had the conversation with them to know whether they're willing or not willing, but, you know, unable because of the circumstances to commit funding. You know, that can, that can create a different issue. So I think, you know, Laura would suggest that this is a really good conversation to have with Laura because she has a good sense of this.
Fair enough. And Laura, I believe she was with us in the meeting because it wasn't you, Kathy, right?
No.
You were, so it must have been Laura. And she was there because I, literally, it was, I think it was the commissioner's first week. So.
I think you're right.
Yeah, it was. And so Laura was there and Alan and Stella. So I think maybe that's, that's the way we go. We do have a special meeting coming up with just legislation proposals. And not that this is a legislation proposal, but perhaps if, once Laura goes through the proposals, because that's what we said, we were going, we really have to concentrate on that perhaps we can, with time, we can take that up, Jessa. And if not, definitely take it up in December. God, that sounds funny saying that, December.
Yeah.
God. Anything else from the committee so we can wrap up and sign off for a little bit before you have to sign back on?
Sign back on.
Rosette?
Rosette.
Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
To adjourn.
Thank you all. We'll see you soon.
We'll see you very soon. Thank you.